We can go.
Yes.
Do it.
Yeah.
Well, our attorney's here now.
We could.
For sure.
Now we can go. Thank you. Legal counsel, adult supervision, cameras.
Like.
Lights. All right, well, we're going to call these second. I guess technically this is kind of.
But second thing.
Okay, a special meeting of mud seven to order and we're going to revisit the one issue that we couldn't quite finish our discussions about, which has to do with the wastewater strategic plan recommendations. Our friends at the Santa Ana River Authority, we're going to go back and look at some information, add some additional analysis for us, and I think we have a new presentation in front of us that you guys can walk us through. Is that right?
So this is based on the request for additional information. We went back and modified that one page here that we had is Mel's February mud packets. Included a few slides in this presentation. Through it for essence of time, and if you want to start cutting at all, I'm happy to do so. I don't know if you wanted to share any thoughts before.
I think it'd be helpful to walk through it. I mean, this is a partial response to our feedback to you and let the whole group see it.
Joe.
Yeah, I assume the same as what you want. You didn't get a new one from last night, right?
No.
Yeah, same last night.
So this again, just recalling the recommendation that came out of strategic planning from stakeholder committee. There was three pieces to that. One regarding proceeding forward with a phase two analysis, looking at what we've deemed alternative nine, construction of a new MBR treatment facility adjacent to plant one and constructing whatever that capacity needs to be in one construction package, 2027 timeframe. The second one was in regards to proceeding with the land acquisitions required to build that new facility. And then the third piece of the recommendation would proceed into preliminary engineering phases of the gravity conveyance line a couple of miles long coming into the new treatment facility where the value would be eliminating up to five existing those stations. So just high level, those are the three recommendations. As I walk through these slides, it's going to touch on those in more detail. One of the requests, I recall that your previous mud meeting was, you know, more detail on what we're doing in phase two on a strategic plan and how we're going to accomplish that.
And was there also some question about the capacity design into? When that's something we talked about is how much capacity.
About what they're going to do to resolve that.
So second page on your slide show here, waste park strategic plan phase two. With that recommendation from the stakeholder group, we will be proceeding with that $500,000 budget. You know, we're not asking for any new bond funds at this time. This would be funded out of the existing 2017 TWD bonds. At a very high level, which I'll go into on the next slide, but we're looking at phase two scope of work includes optimizing the layout of the new facility, you know, that rightsizing the treatment capacity, updating cost estimates to evaluate the rate impacts. Those are kind of the four main goals, objectives of what we plan to accomplish in phase two. Next slide here, I'll go into more details on how the steps associated with that. Schedule approximately that six month schedule timeframe. We have a work order with our consultant finalized and planned for our March SRA's March 23rd board for approval, which would put us around a notice to proceed. We're thinking mid-April. And we would have draft results compiled by the end of the year. So next stage, phase two scope. So here I got kind of those four main objectives broken down to additional detail. So with the first one, optimizing alternative nine layout. So this is going to be a lot of efforts of working with the SRA staff and holding workshops on discussing how should we lay out the critical infrastructure of this new plant, you know, what we had it. You know, a long tenured operations staff, 20, 25 plus year guys that have worked with SRA at our facilities and the knowledge and experience they have, we want to capture that and put it into, all right, hey, I wish we did this different, you know, this is a good idea. So starting to capture some of those conceptual layouts of it. With that, we'd also be laying things out with a mindset of future, potential future expansion. So as you recall, this year-long strategic plan started out as a consolidation stuff. We have since deferred consolidation, but it may come up again sometime down the road along with possible additional growth within plant one service area. So as we lay out a facility, we want to make sure we're doing it a way to where additional, for example, additional membrane modules might be able to be added and have that space for future expansions. Another piece of that is just considering the access and security of the facility, getting deliveries for chemicals or you know, having access to the construction building, those kinds of jobs. The biggest piece of phase two scope.
Can I?
Sorry, go ahead.
So I don't remember hearing anything about potential to expand training plant one service area. Is that in this?
No, that that would be if there was additional growth within the existing.
Existing serving, okay.
That would cause would causing need to expand capacity of this one. So sorry, I missed that.
No, you said it right, but that is a good, good point. I mean, is, is it possible that the service area could expand?
There's an agreement that is between this old agreement, going back to when the river authority first obtained the assets from the predecessor, Howard Hughes, from the plant development company that set out what the service area is. And so both the river authority and development company have to agree to any modification of that service area. Just did that.
What about the trustees? What about the Woodlands Water Agency? I mean, do we get any vote in that? There's a request to expand service area?
Not on that, not under that contract now.
Well, what if it ultimately leads to Woodlands residents having to fund additional capacity because the service area expanded?
Well, any, any need for changes in additional capacity that require funding would have to come back to be funded. Very now, it's going to be new capacity, so there's no, there's no mechanism.
I mean, if they built it where you can add some new modules on there and.
New, that would be new capacity. And so that would be, there's no, up to the element accountings. If a district needed additional capacity, that district would have to pay to construct the capacity without contributions from the other muds.
Okay.
So that's the, that's the current framework post to six and final accounting. You know, through the first, through the six accountings, all the districts shared in expansions of capacity under their individual agreements with the river authority.
So there was an example, I think of what if somebody annexed territory on the other side of 2978 on the far west end? It wasn't even in the original Woodlands layout. You know, is it possible that by somebody annexing territory like that, that somehow could in another mud, that it could somehow impact taxpayers in mud seven as an example?
For new capacity, no.
An example we talked about like yesterday was 39. Okay. But if they go above what's in their sixth and final.
They have to pay.
They have to pay for, but I mean, I think the real crux of the matter is when we set the capacity for this new plant. Permanent capacity may currently be seven, eight, but historically used may be more like six. So you can make, make a case for the new plant should be designed by six. And then anything above that needs to be paid for by somebody else.
Capacity as it comes online.
As it comes online, but they could argue. Are you already permitted seven eight? I want you to rebuild a seven eight and I'm going to fill that seven eight up with this new new demand.
Each faster on capacity.
All right, it's awesome, correct. And so I think we're, we're kind of getting into a little bit of apples and oranges. So you've got a capacity that has been bought and paid for by the various districts pursuant to their individual agreements with the river authority. That is contracted capacity and that is the, you know, the minimum amount that would have to be put into place to replace any facility that would be taken offline. Separate issue is this concept of slack capacity, some additional capacity in the existing system that wasn't purchased by any of the muds in the sixth and final accounting. You know, six and final accounting said, like the previous accountings, you muds, come tell the river authority how much capacity do you think you're going to need for this next 10 year horizon? And then that's what was purchased. There was a little bit more in some places capacity that was available, but was it needed based on the individual district projections?
And is that exit capacity also affected by I and I in our old system or flooding and things like that? Do we have to have extra capacity because of that?
Well, I think that's, that's a bit of a, of a different issue because if you have excursions on major events, then that's going to go. She's usually have a violation or, or, you know.
That's clearly not that what that capacity.
That's not, I think what they're, when they're talking about slack capacity, they're not talking about stuff that's used in an extreme.
In an emergency.
It's caused, it's caused by I and I, they're talking about in the regular system. We have pockets of slack capacity. It's not universal. One track may be able to obtain it because there's no bottlenecks elsewhere in the system. There'd be maybe another track somewhere else in the Woodlands, but there is no slack capacity because there's some bottleneck. So that is separate capacity that we sold, I think, maybe four or so times to other districts and bits and pieces. And that, those funds pursuant to the supplemental agreement that each district had following the sixth and final accounting. Those funds go into the R and R fund to be able to fund rehab and replacement. That was the fairest way to handle that capacity. So if you downsize the plant, then you could be in theory, and I am getting way out of my, you know, lane in terms of engineering, you could potentially be cutting out some of that remaining slack in the system that would be available to serve property that may develop differently than what was anticipated in the sixth and final accounting. Cause that's a best guess back in 2017 or whenever it was of what a track was going to develop as. So something may be more dense than what was initially anticipated, or you could have redevelopment that, you know, nobody's been able to contemplate yet. And those are things that to the extent you have that slack in the system, it's a little cheaper to be able to enable that type of development as opposed to having to construct new infrastructure for additional capacity. Does that answer the questions?
Were you going to comment on that?
Yeah.
It's, I was going to comment on the redevelopment. People aren't thinking about redevelopment necessarily because we're, we think about new development either in and around the Woodlands. But redevelopment is, because the Woodlands is mostly built out in and around it. I mean, if you look even around the outskirts of it, there's not a whole lot of undeveloped properties that are coming to the Woodlands. Yes, there's a little bit to the west, but, but to his point, there may be a significant push over the next 20 years redevelopment. And we've heard of a little bit already here recently, but with the mall, but.
Could have a situation where a redevelopment situation, you know, that's some development company wants to do that requires a lot more capacity. You could say, well, that's part of the price of doing business is you get to pay for that new capacity. I think that you can make that argument.
Yeah, and then it just comes down to how conducive to redevelopment do you want the community to be? Because that could be a big deterrent and somebody may say, well, yeah, I'd love to be in the Woodlands. I'd love to have that brand, but if I've got to go pay X multiplier more for capacity and redevelopment versus going to green, green property, green track somewhere else, I may just go elsewhere because the capacity is that much cheaper. It may be a deterrent. I don't know.
That's, that's that's a good consideration. I mean, we don't want to be a roadblock, you know, for good redevelopment, whatever that might look like.
No, but it has to make sense. There has to be some allowance, but not so much that the existing residents are paying for capacity that's not needed. And that's been the concern.
So what is, what is the right number?
10% excess? I don't know.
And I think residents are going to be more receptive to funding capacity for redevelopment within the Woodlands as opposed to funding capacity outside the current space. They've got more invested in maintaining the woodland quality.
Again, keep in mind, if there is redevelopment and there's not capacity to cover it, the incoming developer would have to pay that. If there's no capacity or ready to cover, right?
Yeah. And so to back, kind of swing back around to the service area issue. So few thoughts on that. One, obviously you've got to have the river authority be agreeable to that and the development company. So they can, that something's going to be competitive with them from a market perspective, they're going to veto any expansion of the service area. Second, you still got to have, they've got to have some district to be able to own and maintain that infrastructure. So it would be coming back through, you know, at least one of the muds to have that property brought in. It wouldn't just be a standalone kind of road project. And that's also something we can talk to the river authority about having some level of, and I'm sure we already have local influence on any of that type of service area expansion. And we've done it in the past, but it's an understandable question as we talk about white sizing this potential new thing out.
There probably are some practical limits anyways. I mean, there's always.
There's not, yeah.
I mean, you got Shenandoah over here blocking any kind of expansion that way and Oak Ridge over here and Harris County over here. So I mean, there are, there's, there are limits to how far that could go.
And the recent example of 39 is a good case.
Right.
Yeah, in that case, to the extent there's not slack capacity there, but 39 via the developer is going to have to pay full rate for any expansions of the river authority system to give them that capacity. That's, yeah, that's the deal.
It's a 2018 map we looked at last night.
It's the agreement, is that the service area defined by the agreement between the two parties as a formal agreement that would have to be? So it's not like a CCN or.
No.
It's just, I agree.
Okay. Move forward and kind of beat that one up pretty good.
Done with the phase two scope. The biggest piece of phase two is really this rightsizing the treatment capacity. Where we're going to be working with a consultant to pull together, you know, the latest and historic SFDUE data, looking at various population growth data, coordinating with our developers, trying to get information from them. Then taking into consideration too, the TCQ requirements, their 7590 rule to where if our capacity hits, you know, for average daily flow over the course of three months, 75% of our capacity, we need to start designing and expanding. And then if you get 90% of that capacity, you know, that's when you're starting construction. So we want to make sure that whatever the right size capacity is to build in 2027, you know, we're not coming right out of a construction package and all of a sudden have to do an expansion. So try and to work through some systematic approach to start at a wide band of here's all the data. We're going to have to make some assumptions along the way and narrow it down to this is the recommended capacity to be constructed.
The 7590 rule, real old TCQ, Roy. Go by, I mean, they, for a long time, they, if you get to 75, you need to start design. By 90, you have to have start construction.
It'll look like.
I believe that if you exhibit that you are have near 75 and there's no plans to go past that as far as potential development, that you can actually apply to freeze it at 80, whatever it is, can't be, can't be 90, but there's a buffer there where you can use that, but you got to get, I think TCQ approved out of you on that, something to consider as well.
But like I said, we're going to take all the data we can gather and narrow it down to one capacity recommendation. There's been questions from numerous mud directors on, well, where are the muds stakeholders, et cetera, going to be engaged throughout phase two? So the current scope is to have three all mud director workshops throughout the phase two scope of work at key milestones to receive input from anyone who wants to participate. So it's not down to just the trustees or just the stakeholder groups. We'll be at every single mud meeting and every single trustee meeting to still present updates. But if you want the multi-hour session of the technical details, then we are going to be doing up to at least three workshops is what's planned. For example, you know, key milestones, we're looking at around, you know, kind of 70% development of what we feel the capacity needs to be. Bring in, have a work, bring mud directors, have a workshop, explain our approach methodology, where assumptions are and get feedback at that point. Once we finalize what the recommendation is for capacity, we withhold another one at that point to really say, all right, based on everything, here's our conclusion and justification for why we feel this should be the capacity. And then the third one is really going to be more on the updated cost estimates and rate impact side further on in the study. So that, that, that's the other piece is once we decide on one capacity alternative, that one alternative will go into the updating the cost estimates and evaluating rate impacts. We're not going to have four different capacity options that we're going to run through a full cost analysis of rate impact. We don't have the time to go feed it. And so that, that's one key thing to.
So do you do any sensitivities for plus or minus? Like I understand your desire to land on a same capacity, but if you go, you know, plus 10 or minus 10 and you check for, for break points where you say, okay, I can go plus 10 and it doesn't cause me to build another basin or I go minus 10 and all of a sudden I save a huge amount of money. Do you do any of that work? I mean, that's the type of work I'm familiar with where we try to certainly where there's uncertainty involved. You'd like to know whether your single answer is, you know, you're on a flat part of a response curve or you're on at a peak. Okay.
So yeah, I would foresee the sensitivity efforts coming out in this, this phase two where, you know, what's the general cost estimate to add another half a million gallon capacity, but also taking in. Cause the main piece of the capacity that we're probably looking at is what that membrane treatment capacity is. There's other aspects of the plant that we might be building to more of an ultimate capacity. Influent lift stations or the headwork system, thing, other infrastructure within that facility might be built to a a longer term capacity or at least set up to expand in a certain manner. The other piece where we talked about, you know, storm flows, you know, that was really set based on the level of service that was laid out in phase one to where we're looking to be able to accommodate a five-year 24 hour storm. And that's where, well, we may not have to do that in full treatment capacity size, but we could have some cheap flow of storage that might be more economically feasible to do that to be able to meet that level of service, but not way over side of the facility. Any other questions on kind of phase two scope?
I appreciate that last night, additional details.
That was a good question.
So next stage is the land acquisition for the new waste park treatment facility. You may recall, we narrowed the strategic plan down to two alternatives. Both of them would require this land acquisition. So what we're looking at is a budget of $6 million. This is planned for turn off rather than having to go through remove bond requirements and TWD requirements and, you know, acquiring deed property. So this is something we plan to kick off here in the very near term. We're going to be bringing on a consultant program, project manager to help manage this whole land acquisition team, which is consistent of legal services, you know, who have to have appraisals done, survey, environmental project management, you know, there's a lot that comes with that. So the consultant that we're, we find not bringing in is very familiar with that and has worked with us with land acquisition programs in multiple divisions of SRA impacts. We plan to go out for a request for qualifications to really procure the land acquisition team. And hopefully by summer, we're executing contracts and proceeding to start that land process. Any questions on that piece of? And right now the focus on that exhibit there is those properties outlined in red. There is another piece of land acquisition that would come later with the conveyance. New conveyance line that would be coming into the facility. So there might be additional acquisition north of the plant, the existing plant. But right now really the high priority is those parcels where the physical plant will be.
So the, the idea of using cash for kind of a long-term project is just that it's more time efficient and you don't have to deal with bond funding rules and other.
Water Development Board bonds are very restrictive on what you can do.
Yeah.
Buying land is one thing, but it comes up with eminent domain, the TWDB and eminent domain don't always get along together.
Okay. All right, so you have some special considerations here for using cash.
Last page in your packet here is regarding recommendation for the conveyance and proceeding. At this point, we're really just asking proceed with the preliminary engineering phases. So during the strategic plan, there's essentially a concept developed and a routing showed on this map of the potential to consolidate those five lift stations into a deeper gravity line coming down to our waste park treatment facility. I believe it's approximately about a two mile section for that solid green line plus probably another couple of miles of of work that would have to be done to connect into those existing lift stations. So where we would start is, you know, looking at preliminary and we invited about 1.5 million dollars. Again, utilizing existing 2017 TWD bonds that we have and getting a consultant or consultant team onboard by the summer to start doing what we would refer to as really a fatal flaw analysis. So the, the concept that was developed in the strategic plan, you know, we need someone to go out there, do some more survey, do some geotech services, preliminary design activities to do a layout for what the routing would be, you know, how deep does this line need to be?
Yeah, how many did?
Connected in.
20 feet, 50 feet?
Based on the strategic plan, I think they were down 30, 35.
So did they tunnel that?
There would probably be some tunnel, I guess. You got to cross underneath the creek. Pipeline crossings. So it's kind of looking at what, what would be the most efficient routing, which may not be the current alignment of the force main that's coming down the plan. It may be something different, but that, that would be the first step is get a consultant to look at in more detail.
Probably going to have to go under Brad's house, I'm thinking.
We have to.
Be careful.
Who's house to hit? Be nice to your neighbor.
And really ultimately coming out of that too and get an updated trust estimate. That's the one that was developed during this strategic plan. Any additional questions on conveyance piece?
Did you guys get all your questions answered between the previous discussion and today? So are we kind of back to then a vote of whether to vote as a mud to approve the process that they're recommending?
A vote as a mud to give direction to your trustee on those three recommendations from the stakeholder committee. Or how to vote.
And are we voting tonight on that?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? We'd like to make a motion on how we want to vote as a mud at tonight's, or how you want your trustee representative to vote on this issue at tonight's trustee meeting?
I'll make the motion if I don't have to repeat what you said with the options.
To direct, or to direct the trustee to vote in favor of. To direct, or to direct the trustee to vote in favor of.
In favor of the options that we've been given. And I think, I appreciate the questions these gentlemen have asked. And it's, it appears there's been some amplification and clarification and and the help to get all of us to understand. I appreciate that. And I make the motion that we accept that option. I think go forward. And then direct our.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstains? Okay. Thank you. It took a little longer than you guys expected to get this one through, but hey, we're making progress.
We're weren't happy to take the time, you know, we understand and acknowledge this is a big project for the Woodlands coming up. Want you to be informed. You're going to be asked questions from residents. Want you on board.
We got to work together. And so thank you for clarifying all this. Okay, then unless there's any other business, I would say the meeting's adjourned. Is there anything else? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.